I'd like to call the Town of Hebron Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting of July 10th to order at 7:01 PM. If we could rise for please.
Resonations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or changes to the agenda? All right. At this time, we'll do public comment. This section of the agenda is reserved for persons in attendance who wish to briefly address the Board of Selectmen. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or a board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should make arrangements to do so through the Town Manager's Office or the Board Chair. Persons wishing to comment should type "comment" online and your name in the chat box and you will be recognized. Any online done?
There are no comments online.
Any in person? Okay.
Well, now, Victor has a comment.
Okay. Go ahead, Matt.
Oh, thank you. Hi, this is Matt Leicher, 62 Wellswood Road, also a member of the Board of Finance, and I'd just like to apologize for making it to the last meeting. And I would like to comment, first of all, thank Donna for her 30-plus years of service and her wealth of knowledge. And I would also like to endorse Dory Wolf for appointment in your activities tonight. I believe Dory is very capable. She's been here for seven years and has been a faithful follower of Donna. And at this time, with so many ideas and so many things happening in the town, I think we need some continuity, and I think Dory would provide that. I thank you for your attention and have a great meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Nothing else, son.
All right. That brings us to item five, Good to Know, Special Recognition.
Yes, with us today under request of Tiffany, our faithful assessor here, Suzanne. Tiffany had posed a question and wanted to know the change to the assessment on the motor vehicles. It's been quite a buzz in newspapers and I guess on social media. So Suzanne put something together from peers, other assessors that she worked with and versus with, along with a very good article that was in the Journal of Inquirer, I believe, earlier this week.
I referenced it, yeah.
So.
And that was a really good article.
I don't know, Tiffany, if you want to read the question.
I think, I don't have a specific question, but when you hear people talk about what's happening with their tax bills when they dropped, there was a sticker shock. There was a lot of misinformation on social, so I'm wondering if we can invite her to just speak very briefly to some of the changes that people saw. If we could put this document in the minutes, that would be extremely helpful. I just think, you know, whenever we see misinformation or we see people with a ton of questions, I think the appropriate venue is to have someone here at our meetings and just kind of, we know what to talk it through for people who have questions.
Yeah. So we first put something out briefly in Hebrew Review, so I can say that this has been a big change for every town all across the state, and it's been talked about on every social media town forum across the state. So we are adapting as well as everyone else. There was legislation that was initially scheduled for 2023 that was put off and became effective for October 1, 2024 grant list. And it was even amended after, it's been amended several times. What it did is changed how we value motor vehicles going from an average retail value-oriented lean retail value to MSRP based on your manufacturer with a fixed depreciation schedule, which goes down 5% every year, including a 20% of value, so 80% depreciation after 14 years, and we continue past that. So, and the idea is, the philosophy is to provide a continuous reduction year over year in the value of the motor vehicle. And a lot of it was a reaction to the fluctuations we saw in value that came about through COVID. And values increased and have even been continuing to increase even this day and holding at values. So, you know, you don't expect your used car to increase in value, and it was, or an RV or whatever. And so there had to be a basis to find a way to show consistent appreciation. And this is what the legislators at the state capitol came up with, and it became statute that we administer. There were also some exemptions that were put in place. So personal utility trailers, your boat trailer, flatbeds, you know, where you do your dump runs, those are exempt, so you're not getting bills. And all train vehicles and snowmobiles are now exempt. So overall, we saw in town here a $4 million reduction. Even though we had an increase in the average number of motor vehicles, we did see overall a $4 million reduction in overall volume to the grant list with the implementation of those programs. But it's not, yes.
You explain then how that overall affects the average taxpayer?
Well, the answer is kind of, it depends. Although overall, we saw a reduction, everything really kind of goes in a bell curve, right? So not every motor vehicle, because we're resetting it back from an MSRP and because cars depreciated different schedules, right, for a clean trade-in, not every vehicle had a reduction. And some, although a limited amount, did increase. What we try to do in our office when people reach out to us is, let's make sure that there was no error in the system and the MSRP is correct. And then, you know, we verify that the depreciation is at the year it has to be. Most people overall should have seen a reduction in their bills, but not every, every vehicle initially went down. Some did go up because it's being reset to an MSRP.
So with that reduction in what the town collects on motor vehicles, how does that affect people's property tests?
Well, you're paying somewhere. If you're, if you're paying, if there's less money to be derived from motor vehicles, it has to come from somewhere. And if it doesn't magically appear, then it's reflected in a change in real estate and personal property. Yeah. I also would mention that there is a cap on the motor vehicle mill rate of 32.46 mils. It can go below that, but usually see that in towns that have gone through evaluations where the mill rates have dropped. We are, 2026 is our revaluation, so we can't predict what's going to happen between now and then, but I can tell you that the mill rate for motor vehicles cannot go higher than 32.46 mils. So when you're collecting taxes on a motor vehicle, it's at the 32.46 for this town.
And just because it's not available for, for public consumption, it, I guess we'll add it to the minutes. But part of your analysis here is that you start off at 90% of the MSRP decreasing at 5% per year until you hit a floor of 20. So that's, I guess that's kind of another thing that people aren't necessarily used to because a 10-year-old vehicle, to me, that I'm like giving my kid that's a junker, does not have 20%, at least I don't think it has 20% if it's a value still in it. So, you know, and, and with that 5% reduction per year with your taxes, it takes you 14 years to get there. So, you know, it's very difficult for the average member of the public to think to themselves, my 15-year-old car is still worth 20% of the ticket price, whether or not I paid that when I bought it, and whether or not a 15-year-old car is even still running or is rusted out or whatever. It can be difficult for people to swallow sometimes. So I know that's, that's why we have that buzz.
Yeah. Well, I had a car that I was offered less than I was assessed at, and I had nowhere to go with that.
Right, yeah.
I have to write a check just like everyone else, and yeah, it was not fun.
Yep. And I note that you say here that vehicles over 20 years old cannot have a value lower than $500. So no matter what, no matter how old the car is, you still have to pay something.
So a Studebaker, for example, we had, maybe it had an assessment of 1940 Studebaker with an MSRP at that time of $3,000. Once it depreciates, falls below the 500, but it can't, it's not going to fall below 500.
Yeah. And that would also apply to vehicles that have the classic car, basically?
So we put a classic car plate on it, which you could obtain from the DMV if it reaches 20 years. By statute, by law, it has a fixed assessment of $500. So a little more effort on your end, but if you obtain a classic plate motor vehicle, we have many cars in this town that have that. It's coded in such a way that it has a fixed assessment of $500.
And can you repeat again? What is the criteria for the number of years?
20.
What?
20. It used to be 25, now it's 20. And information is available on the DMV's website about how to go through the process to get a classic plate.
Okay. Just like to get that in the news, too. Thank you. I think it's also helpful to note that, you know, we, the board made the decision to move to the 90% schedule. And so can you just elaborate? You've got some good data here about a poll that your fellow assessors conducted. I think that'd be helpful to the public to hear.
So if you hadn't elected, another option is an 85% down. We found that the initial values gave us a $14 million drop or a 14% reduction, which again, would have negatively, really negatively impacted the mill rate for personal property and real estate. And there was a statewide poll that people were asked to provide feedback town to town, which schedule that they were going to utilize. And more than two-thirds of the towns, and this was supported by feedback from OPM, have elected to go with a 90% down to 20%.
And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe when we passed that, we, we put in a provision that we could examine it in a year and see if it was still, I think we could.
Because at, at some point, I would like people to have a floor of 15 instead of 20.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the residents would appreciate that.
Gotcha. They want to make sure that was on record, too.
But yeah, we, we were trying to balance the impact of immediate tax levy from that, that first shock of moving to the new system versus people that have those, you know, 15-year-old cars, whether it's assessed at 20% or 15%. So I would, I would, when our budget can absorb it, get to that schedule that benefits people with the older cars. But it just was not a great thing this year.
No.
Well, the good news is it's not a one-and-done. And, you know, this is what the legislators have put in place right now. Legislation changes every year. Hopefully they'll, they'll stick with this so that we have a chance to really absorb and live with it. Like I said, the legislation was changed, tweaked several times after the initial passing that was supposed to go into effect with the 23-go grant list that became 20.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
This was really helpful.
I appreciate it.
I think people will, might not be happy, but at least they'll have all the facts, right?
Yeah. I don't get a choice. I don't get to choose. I, I follow the statute.
Yeah. We do. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very helpful.
Good job.
All right. Section 6A, Appointments and Resignations. The Director of Administrative Services appointment. Dan, if you want to go ahead and read that motion?
Sure. Proposed motion, move that in accordance with the Town Charter, Section 801. The Hebron Board of Selectmen confirms the Town Manager's appointment of Doriane Wolf as Director of Administrative Services effective August 16, 2025.
Thank you. I did want to provide some discussion on this just because we had tabled the motion from the last meeting due to some inquiries from different selectmen and selectwomen regarding the process. And the Town Manager had provided us some additional information. Unfortunately, that information came very close to the meeting and we weren't able to really absorb it or ask any follow-ups. Since that time, I, I think it was a good idea for us to table it because being on vacation, I didn't have time to really absorb it myself. I don't know about anyone else kind of reading through the different, the different information that was posed to us. But now being back from vacation and having a chance to look through the information myself, I, I find, I find that I'm in agreement with some of the questions regarding the procedure that in the past, in the past couple of years, it has been common practice for the job description to come before the Board of Selectmen for analysis and revision in accordance with the Charter, Section 1001 and 1002. You know, especially with a position as important as this that works hand in hand with the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen, I did kind of feel that getting the job description and being able to analyze it at such a late date, I wasn't able really to look at it until after my vacation. You know, there, there were some questions about, about updating it because the last time it was looked at was in 2013, I believe. So obviously, I don't necessarily know that the, that the job is exactly the same. I know Donna does a lot of stuff above and beyond. That's not necessarily saying that the, the next person being hired isn't going to, whether or not they're going to be expected to perform that above and beyond kind of stuff. But I did kind of have, you know, questions surrounding that, that subject matter. Being new to the position, I reached out to the previous chair and especially about things that have happened over, over prior years and how he felt about procedure because I had seen this play out so many times before with the job description coming before us. The previous chair, Peter Casper, said that actually it was a concern when he had had meetings with the Town Manager about the duties that were being done above and beyond the basic job description. And he informed me that he had requested that a job analysis be done. Now, I, I know none of us had a chance to ask those questions or look at any of that leading up to the prior meeting. Being tabled to this meeting, I think it's something that, having found out now, it's something that I would like to investigate whether those duties are going to be incorporated into the new position, especially as we may consider them part of the job because we, we didn't, we don't necessarily know what Donna does above and beyond in any certain subject matter. We just think, you know, Donna does a fantastic job. So I do think that I would like to have, you know, some more information about that analysis and some more information about how the Town Manager's Office is going to look after her retirement. And so I personally am again in favor of, again, I, you know, it's, it's not a great situation and I don't have anything against any of the candidates, but I do want some clarification as far as a lot of these things that, that I'm just now finding out about. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
Questions? I, again, I've, I've been heavily involved with, with the town staff, being on my elected boards for, for what, 16 years. I think we need to get a person to fill that position. We have time to review the job description if we want to change it or whatever, adjust it, but we need to get somebody there now. Somebody needs to get trained. We have a person that has, in effect, been doing a lot of those functions with Donna for a number of years. So it is a perfect fit, is a perfect segue into that next position up. Her work ethic is second to none. Her dedication is second to none. And I think we need to get that person on board. If we want to go over job descriptions and what we want to see different, we can still do that, but it is important to get somebody in that position. Otherwise, for what you're saying, you could be two, three, four months before this gets finalized. And we need somebody in that position to do those functions. I, I think, I think it would be a serious detriment to not, A, get Dory in there and to also try to have that off, which right now is still just three people, Andy, Donna, and Dory. To do that at two people would, will be devastating to this town. Yeah. I keep saying we don't have enough staff and, and what we are doing with our staff is, is pushing them to the limits. And by losing key staff, I don't see how that benefits the town in any way. You know, if we want to adjust job descriptions, this should have been something that should have been discussed as soon as Donna had stated her intention to retire, not after an interview process and a hiring process has been completed. And nothing is new from what has been done literally for, ever since Bonnie Theroux, Town Manager beforehand. You know, so if we're going to start changing the way things are done, we need to do it ahead of time, not as an after the fact.
I, I agree, but I also am just now learning about the ahead of time because unfortunately, you know, I, I hate to say anything without him here to comment on it himself, but I don't remember being copied on any emails or any, any formal documents where Peter requested this information, which maybe is a shortfall on, on our part as a Board of Selectmen. Obviously, you know, we, we are supposed to be putting things to the Town Manager in official documents so that he's not just acting, you know, on, on the say-so of a single selectman. So I, I do see that as a shortfall on, on our part. But, but again, to your point, now having talked to Pete, it's my understanding that that was in process, but never came to fruition to be presented to us. So I, I, again, I don't have the specifics of when it may, when those conversations may have started. Obviously, they started before he left us, but, you know, that's why I'm, I'm just very hesitant on this because I feel that we are getting information in a, in a trickle, you know? And that, that causes me to ask even more questions. And, and I think as, as representatives of town residents who also may be receiving this information very piecemeal, you know, the optics of it are not great. You know, we, we have, we have very little information being put up to them. In the past two years, we've had nine positions where the job description was posted and needing prior to being posted. Over that same course of time, we had four positions where it did not. So you're talking two-thirds versus one-third. You know, from, from a position of this is being proposed to us and it's an internal candidate, and that internal candidate has not been officially designated yet, yet that internal candidate's job has been posted again without the job description being put forward to us, which that job description might have changed based on Peter's analysis of duties of things that would shift from the director's position to the Town Manager's assistant's position. You know, I, I just, I feel from a resident's perspective, it, it, it opens up more questions than answers.
I, I just respectfully disagree. The job description is what it has been for years. Donna has assumed a lot of other responsibilities, but the basic job description is the basic job description. And that is the stuff that Dory is doing. It has never been stipulated that we should get each job description prior to somebody being hired. The job descriptions that were given, one of them was because one of the, they couldn't find anybody to fill the job description as written, so they had to take things out of it. You know, so as I say, I, I just respectfully disagree. I think we need to move forward to this, if nothing else, to maintain continuity in the other town hall. If, if we want to go over and have some workshops and kind of tear things apart, fine, but that takes time. And we don't have that, that type of time to do this. You know, we need to do it for next time. We need to do it for next time or whatever, if you wanted a better mousetrap. But you don't do it at, at, at the end of the process. It needs to be done before the process. And it was stated months ago when he was conducting the interviews. You know, there's, there's not been anything that hasn't been done and similar to done in the past. And no one asked, oh, I want to see the jobs. You know, if it's a shame on us, it's a shame on us. Well, right now, we're going to be penalizing the town because of a shame on us because we didn't ask, you know, for that information when the process first began. That's our fault. That's not.
I, I, I agree. I just don't, I don't know how, like you said, other than workshops and additional stuff after the fact, but again, that's, that's after the fact. You know what I mean? What if we change the job description so drastically that it's not what is posted? And now you have candidates that may not agree with what the expectations of their job position is?
I, I, so as I said, you're going to leave a position open for how many months? You know, and how is that going to adversely affect the workings of the town? I, I, I just don't agree. We need to get somebody in there. And as I say, it was a four-person panel that unanimously suggested the three candidates to the Town Manager, and he's the one that made the final decision. But, you know, we have to have also faith in the Town Manager to know what he or she, whoever it happens to be, needs for their people to help to keep that cohesiveness and that team spirit in that three-person office.
I, I agree. I understand where you're coming from, Dan. I, I couldn't agree with that point more. The Town Manager having a well-working town office and, 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 you know, cohesive town government is extremely important to the residents. However, the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen having a cohesive, unified management of the town as described in Charter is also very important. And, and I think that, you know, what you know, when, when I'm finding out that a previous board member, a, a previous chair has, has made a suggestion or a direction or whatever, and that does not come to fruition, is not passed along. We have, we have it mentioned in the town manager's report. The interviews will be conducted. The meeting before the meeting for appointment, because the first time we see this mentioned is in the June twelfth, the June 12th agenda. So, you, you know, again, I agree with you. It's, it's our fault, and I do think that we should do everything possible, like meet possibly in special meeting to make sure that we get this done as quickly as possible so it doesn't impact the workings of the town. But, you know, I, I, I'm sorry, I do kind of put some of that on Pete to not keep us in the loop and to not keep this above board, but that's not what I want to continue as chair. I, I, I apologize. I just, as chair, I don't want to continue with not keeping the board informed of how we're moving forward.
I also think, if I can weigh in here, um, you know, we as a board, we don't have choices of when to follow the charter and when not to follow the charter, right? And I'm reading it and it's pretty clear that, um, we look at all the job descriptions and, and it's, it's incumbent on the town manager to share that information with us. I don't think a twelve-year-old job description, you know, really, really fits the bill in twenty twenty-five. And I have no doubt that the candidate can do the job. But I think a process wasn't followed here when in years past, when I've looked and we've approved various job descriptions for different members of the executive team or even just, um, administrative assistants and other offices, when those have all come before the board. This one, I feel, should have come before the board, before it was posted. Because that's what it says in the charter. And while I agree with you, Dan, that like, I agree, it, it doesn't put us in the best situation. But I'm bound to follow the charter and I have to tell you that I think the public expects us to follow the charter and to do everything above board. So I would just add that to the discussion.
Yeah, I have three points. Number one is, um, precedent. Number two is policies and procedures, and number three is the perception of fairness to future people that come and apply for jobs here in this town. If we're not following charter, I can't in good faith go forward. Number two, if we're not following precedent, then why are we doing this? And number three, if we're going to change the rules for somebody now, why would we, then the next people to come up for the next position, how is it fair to them if we do it one way versus the right way or not the right way? So it's, it's an appearance of, of fairness.
Okay, what rules have we changed? This has been the same?
Well, it's right there, Dan, right there, section one, zero, zero, two. It's right, it's clear.
Read it to me, please.
Go ahead.
The town manager, subject to the approval of the Board of Selectmen, shall prepare a statement of the duties and responsibilities of each position covered by the personnel policies and procedures and of the minimum qualifications for appointment to such position. And that did not happen in advance of this process.
And hasn't it happened in advance of every other person we fired? And the answer is no.
I, I can't, oh, manager.
Whatever.
I, I can't speak to prior process again. You know, it's our fault. You know, I say our fault as the Board of Selectmen, even though it was, it was Peter that didn't necessarily send the email or have the official document or make sure that we all agreed to direct the town manager to do an analysis. You know, but, but like, my thing is, I, I can't, all I can do for previous boards is say I'm sorry. But what I can do for this board, or for my vote, for my chair, is hold myself to a certain standard. And, and, and I, I apologize, that's, Andy.
And just to answer Dan's question, if I can really quickly, yes, we did. We approved the finance director. We've approved the secretary for Parks and Recreation. There were, um, there have been a multitude of job descriptions that have come before me.
Right, because they have changed from what they.
But whether they change or not, the charter doesn't say that, Dan. It doesn't say only if they change. It says they're to come to the Board of Selectmen. And I've seen a bunch of them. And I think, I would agree with Keith, I'm not sure that that's been consistent, but I sure have seen and approved a few.
Thank you. Forty years I've been doing this, thirty-eight. We follow the charter. Those job descriptions were approved by a Board of Selectmen. And Danny was right in stating the ones that you have seen recently were either changed or modified. And anytime we do that, that has to have Board of Selectmen approval. The two positions that we're talking about, this one here and positions, those are the job descriptions that we advertised for. Those were what were used for the interviews. And myself was under the impression, because they are approved job descriptions that we had already met the charter by doing it at that time. So that's the understanding, at least, for not bringing the job description to the Board of Selectmen prior to the job description when it's time to hire the person with their resume. When Peter reached out to me, it was a training mechanism. He said, Donna does a lot of things and we need to have things weekly, daily, monthly basis, frequency, importance. He said, that's going to help you and whoever you get in this position, try to understand or know to keep the town's business moving forward, monthly or weekly or daily reoccurrences, when this stuff has to be brought in from the Board of Selectmen charter or through budget or things like that. It, it was, it was a guide. It wasn't to be added as a job description. And we have that and we can share that. We, Donna did it herself. Actually, it was requested, so who better to do it than the person that's doing the job? But in no way did we think that was anything that was like being hidden or, or. I get this feeling like we keep getting accused of doing things wrong, and I don't think we're trying to do things wrong. And I, was that your impression on the job descriptions that they were already approved?
The job descriptions are our approved job.
Yeah, so that's, that's our answer to that comment. I, I can't say anything more than that, but I follow the, the charter to the letter of the law. That's the town manager's job is to, that's the Bible and that's the way they operate. So to have, like comments mentioned, that we're not following or we're violating the charter, that's, that is, that's like going to be hurtful because that's nothing we intended to, and I don't think we did it, but that, you know, I think we did a fair process. We, and the policy, the policy and procedures, I think I followed them to the T. I mean, the town attorney wrote the letter saying that it was the town manager's prerogative. And this is what we've done in the past, like the hiring of the, uh, interviews and the panels and things like that. So it wasn't, you know, I hate the mud in the waters because this is, is an important decision. I don't, I don't like the taste that you guys have been left out. That was never my intention. It just, and I'll leave it at that.
I got three questions, Andy, and Donna can answer two. Number one, the job description as described and as people applied for and entered for, was the same one that has been in existence for how long?
Over years.
Twenty thirteen.
When we, when we made it, when we put it into the charter.
So that was the same job description that was used for this particular round?
Yes.
Okay. Was that, was there any, um, draft or language changing for this job description up until right now? And it's never been considered to be changed?
Not since we did it.
If, if it were to be changed, it, it would have to come.
And we've been very good at doing it. We never have done it. So the job descriptions you referred to, you're a hundred percent correct. There were changes or modifications to them. That's why you saw them.
I don't have another question right now.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that the charter does have that, that vagueness that is part of all statute. Yes, it was approved by a board, not necessarily this board. And, and I get that. You know, I'm not saying that you haven't followed your interpretation of the charter. But I, I feel, and, and again, this all boils down to optics and, and personal feelings about my job in my role. You know, again, he may have felt it fine to, to talk with you on the side and that it was kind of interpreted again as a, a, you know, helpful thing to just kind of figure out where stuff goes. But as someone looking in from the outside, if, if, if I'm a manager and I do a job analysis, you know, I find it very difficult to believe that the job hasn't changed in twelve years, especially when you say that Donna goes above and beyond. Uh, and, and that's repeated by just about everybody I talk to. And, and as a board, we are accustomed to that level of performance from that job position. And so I wonder if, even if we are going back to the twenty thirteen version and saying that this is all that is expected of the incumbent, you know, person, where do those other, so, so now when I'm looking for something that Donna used to do and, and it doesn't technically fall under the new purview, do I go to the town clerk? Do I go to the assessor? Do I go to the finance director? I don't know. And again, that's something that maybe we have to have workshops in the future to look at. But, um, I, again, just from my own perspective, as, as a representative of the town and as the chair of this board, I feel very uncomfortable with the optics of it and, and especially learning about this stuff at a very late date and, and not having seen it. I have no clue how I would feel once I do see all of it. You know, um, I may feel that that job description needs significant change.
And a follow-up question on, on the job description as it stands now, over a decade old, people have stated over and over again that Donna, in her position, goes, goes above and beyond. If that is the case, my question is, is that fair? And is she being compensated appropriately for the extra work that she's doing above and beyond? The job description, that troubles.
You're going to find there's a lot of people in this town who work for this town that do a lot of things for the town outside of their normal business hours or normal working hours. And in all divisions, all aspects of this town. And that's, it, it's, it's great. It's, it's, um, it's the reality that our employees like working for even because it's a good place to work and it's a fair place to work. And our, our management staff has respect for our employees and they show it by putting in extra time here or there to help out or, or, or they go that extra mile. And as a result, again, sadly, a lot of the newer workforce does not have that same type of, of ethic that we have been so blessed with in this town. I say that, I also say that if people start feeling unappreciated, that could change very quickly. And that would also be a shame. We, in this town, and I've stated it at many, many, literally every, every budget cycle, we are working on skeleton crews on many fronts. Our building department, when the building inspector goes away, he has to find a replacement. There, you know, uh, same with the fire marshal. He, well, he has a deputy. He has to make sure the deputy's going to be around. You know, they're going the extra mile. They could just say, no, I'm taking this week off. Sorry. No, no permit. Nobody gets looked at this week. But they don't because they care for, for the community. They go that extra mile. At some point in time, we really are going to need more people, but we just don't have the money. And thankfully, we've had great employees that appreciate working here. And, um, I, I would hate to see that go away. And I have seen under a past town manager, and I won't give a name, who basically, due to their actions, we, the town, ended up with an extra union because of the way that individual treated the workforce. So I just, just caution you on that. Do we need to possibly change some things? Not saying we don't. But we need to get staff in place so that we can spend the time to do those changes and to, and to make the adjustments to make it a better place. I, I just feel we would be doing the town a disservice if we don't move forward on this. And, um, that, that skill, first off, and, and that those years of knowledge will only be a benefit as we move forward. We're trying to redo and rewrite things. Because we, we will have background knowledge to draw from. So I really feel very, very strongly that we need to move forward on this. Not saying that we don't need to address changes, but we can do that from within. And I think to, to try to hold off is going to be a disservice to the community. And you're going to lack, but, but you're going to lose a tremendous amount of cotton.
So, again, newcomer. I fully understand distaste of an older job description. But if we're going to cite precedents, I feel we still have to use, yes, it was a different board, but the Board of Selectmen did approve the job description. And he changes to that job description, the Tiffany statement is, would be a rug hole. Because now they're not, no longer applying for that position. I come from the skilled labor side, not the management side. So I do feel that sometimes, while I feel these are the right reasons, because we're going off of the published job description, sometimes the right person who's capable of doing the job can be brought on for what in, I don't want to say hindsight, because it would have been foresight for previous boards, are not necessarily what we feel are the correct reasons. Unfortunately, our feelings on the reasons are immaterial at the moment because there is a job description. It's older and it probably could use change. And I would say that is our, you know, that's on us to make that change through official channels. Um, and then if the person who happens to be in the position at the time disagrees, and that's a statement that can be made, you know, going forward. That's a different situation. Personally, I, I mean, I, I don't see any negative optics in, in following a procedure that was set forward admittedly a decade plus ago, but none of the boards since have seen fit to change that. So for me, I don't, I don't see an argument against policy. Again, as a newcomer, I don't know Andrew personally. Uh, but based on his description, his job description, contract and the charter, I'm forced to assume that he is competent, trustworthy and expert in his field. Um, so I would tend to, based on what's been presented to me, I would tend to agree with his recommendation. I don't see a reason to go against it that is more convincing than his expertise in choosing the candidate in the first place.
Well, question, uh, back to the job description. So, um, in the future meetings, if we do decide to change this job description, how does that affect the person that's in, the new person that's in the job?
She has, she does have a six-month probationary period that we as a board are enabled to extend by in three-month increments as, as needed or I guess technically as desired, but as, as required by our motions, we are allowed to extend the probationary period if necessary. Other comments?
I suggest let's move the question. Okay. Um, with the motion on the table, um, Dan Larson?
Aye.
Sean?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teale?
Tiffany Teale, no.
Claudia Riley?
Um, hearing what I've heard today, as to the job description, how it hasn't changed? I'm gonna vote aye.
I, I would have preferred to table it to get more information because I, I really don't hold it against the candidate so much as the process. But I do think that we need to analyze this process and get some of the answers on, on where excess, excess job duties may land. And schedule some workshops to, to get that through. I, I would, I would not have voted yes at this time. Uh, Keith Pennitt, no. And with that, it is passed three two. All right. Uh, Hebron Historic Properties Commission resignation. Sean, could you read that?
Yes.
Could you read that motion?
This is, this is most, oh, there is, there's, what? We move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accepts the resignation of Jonathan Bernard from the Hebron Historic Properties Commission with regret and thanks for his years of service.
Any comments on that motion?
Uh, sure. I've, I've known John for many, many years. He's done tremendous amount of work at the Peters House. Uh, that was one of the reasons he got on the commission in the first place. Uh, but that being said, um, you know, his, his health has had some issues. And, uh, while he still has spirit, let's say that years have, are catching up to all of us. Who am I kidding? But, uh, you know, he, he has been a very, very supportive, uh, individual of that, of that project. And I thank him for all the work that he has done on it. And again, I urge all the board members to take some time, come to the Peters House and see what it is. You know, and if you ever need, call me, I've got lights set up so I can do nighttime tours. Like a candle visual, but no light handle.
Peters House?
Yes.
It is, it is a nice tour.
Wonderful, a wonderful tour.
All right, any further comment? Okay. Uh, Dan Larson?
Uh, Dan Larson, aye.
Sean Fitzgerald?
Sean Fitzgerald, aye.
Tiffany Teale, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Keith Pennitt, aye. Passes unanimously. And that takes us to section seven, the Town Manager's Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we've been busy doing the fiscal year rollover. It is July. We continue to do Public Works Union negotiations. Uh, we're working on a new FOI request from Mr. Tim Howard. We continue to work on the ARPA projects, pickleball courts are open. We drilled the well today at the Dog Park. Fortunately, we didn't get a lot of water, but we did get that accomplished. We are doing training in the Town Manager's Office. Uh, we are paving Skinner Lane, which is almost done, but because of the weather, they didn't, they chose to finish it today, but it's 90% complete. So that was done in a, in a pretty good, short amount of time and getting it done for school buses run, so. Um, we're doing a sprucing up now that we have the new budget. But the Veterans Park, we're painting all the buildings, the gates. Now we have new skate park and a new play skate. They're gonna be resurfacing the basketball court. So we're gonna try to dial that whole thing in. So that's getting a lot of good reviews as the pickleball is as well. Um, we've been very, I know Mel's not here, but we've been very busy back and forth working on the RAM generator uh, bids. That's, um, and all Mel's on our side. I know sometimes Tiffany likes to hear from the people on the commission. It, it is the board's pleasure to ask Mel to speak to that.
Sure.
Thanks, Sandy, and, uh, thank you, you board. Many of you, uh, I think most of you are familiar with the fact that, uh, uh, RAM received a $2 million grant, uh, through the, uh, working of our state representative and our state governor, uh, our state senator, uh, to install a larger generator and re, readjust the high school and middle school so that it can become an emergency shelter. Uh, we've split this up into multiple phases just due to some funding, uh, shortfalls. And we did put a bid out to get a generator pad and all the work outside the water, uh, outside the building put in place. That was not responded to, we received no bids on that. However, uh, all the, uh, people that came to the meeting said they wanted to be involved and they wanted to do that job, but they were just too busy. We had put the restriction in of having it done during the summer for obvious reasons. Students not being in the school, school, uh, staff not being there, less, less use of the area. Uh, however, they could not meet that. So, uh, they've all agreed that they would like to bid on that. So we are, and we work with the RAM administration. We are going out, back out to bid and we're looking for the work to begin outside the building in September, uh, to be completed before the frost. We've also, uh, put out a bid for, uh, the pre-purchase of the generator because the lead time on the generator is about 40 weeks average based on, uh, information we've received. We did open bids on Monday, Donna was, was with us and, and helped us. And we received four bids. Uh, two of them were not complete. And based on that, and with the advice from our attorney narrowing it down to just two, two vendors, they felt it was appropriate, uh, because there was also some misunderstanding in the language in the RFP. Um, it was appropriate to reject all and that language was in our, our, uh, RFP. So, uh, the intent is we will reject all, go back out to bid on it. And hopefully we'll get the, those four and maybe a few more. Uh, now that, uh, pricing is kind of in public and, and exposed. So, uh, we are moving ahead. The generator, we would look to install the generator, uh, and get the building up and running in the summer of '26. Assuming we can get that generator on site, meaning we have to get the, uh, the pre-purchase out there uh, by the end of, uh, October. So that's what's going on with RAM. And I can address, uh, with Keith, what's going on with the Public Building Committee and the, uh, Department of Public Works at a later date. Thank you for your opportunity and I'll try to attend most of your meetings. So if there are any questions as we go along, as well as being able to update you, uh, I'll be available. Thank you.
Thanks. Any?
I'll be soon, yeah.
I'm, I'm
I actually, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I need to resurrect the issue of the job descriptions. And I know that you had mentioned potentially doing some workshops. Those need to happen sooner than
We can add that, let's address that.
Item not in the report.
Well, we cannot, once we have moved on, we cannot go back.
Ah.
I apologize.
That's okay.
However, we can
Address that in 9D. Yes, on the business?
Yes, but
Does it Tiffany beat me?
Well
Oh, yeah.
So, yeah, yes.
I was gonna wait until 9D, but
Okay, no, you make a point.
It can either be addressed in 9C or 9D, whether we want to add it to a regular meeting or whether we want to do
I thought this, I didn't want to lose the train of
Nope, that's, I know, that's why I scribbled. Um, no, but we, yeah, we cannot go back, we must charge forward.
Gotcha.
Um, and with that in mind, if you're good on seven. Eight, A. No, no, we're not doing, we're not doing ARPA, right? No, okay. AB, Department of Public Works Action Committee. Uh, I don't have any update. Mal, you said you had some additional information.
Sure. Uh, a- as you're all aware, uh, because you approved the contract, uh, we do now, we are now working with a, uh, a professional architect out of Hamden, uh, Silver Petroselyan Associates. They have, uh, made several visits to the existing site. Uh, they are now in the midst of the, uh, Phase One environmental, looking for any issues with the environment. Um, and we know we have no issues with the existing building, the, uh, the actual Public Works building where the trucks are and where the office is. However, uh, because the storage facility, the white shed, uh, that's not shed, garage, same, uh, facility as where the dog pound is, that was built in 1967. So they do need to examine some things in there, looking for any hazardous materials. Uh, we don't know that we will find any, we hope that we don't find any, obviously. But that is ongoing and we should have some results, uh, on that in the August timeframe. So that, that's what I have right now for you, Keith. Thank you.
Yes, and actually sitting here looking at Todd, um, be- before, if you have something to, uh, add, before we go to that, I know I'm getting the emails, but I just want to make sure that the other selectmen are getting emails from the Public Works Action Committee about okay, that, I apologize. Um, not in the last week. Can we, actually, that's not for Todd, that's gonna be, can we have, right now, the Public Works Secretary is letting the, uh, Action Committee know about site visits?
Yeah.
So that we can walk around and see where they're gonna drill the holes, I guess. Todd may have more information in a second, but I would like to open that up to all selectmen, uh, just so they, I know it doesn't fit with my schedule right now, but that doesn't mean that it doesn't fit your schedules. So, um, if we could open that up to all the
See, I put a segment on that distribution.
Yeah, on, on the email distributions, yeah, for those sites, that's it. Yeah. And then Todd, do you have anything?
We can add that, Keith. I'll, I'll make that a do.
Okay, Mal's gonna, Mal's gonna handle that.
I'll, I'll handle that for you. For, for your info, I don't know if this is for good or for bad, and I tried to, I tried to pawn it off on Keith, but, uh, since Peter has, has left, uh, I am now the chairman. Uh, I did offer it to Keith, but, uh, he's kind of busy in his daily life. So, uh, I, I, I will continue there. And if there are any questions, please don't hesitate to ask. Either give me a call, give me an email and I'll, uh, I'll get back to you as quickly as I can. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Todd Hovig, DPW Action Committee Vice Chair. Um, I've asked to be copied on all those emails and Rose has been very good. And she did, and I met the engineers at the initial visit, toured with them, listened, watched, very informative. And, uh, she let me know that ground penetrating radar was being done and I went down to see it. And, uh, I missed them, they weren't there very long for, but I don't fully understand their job. So, um, there is another meeting coming up that I'm aware of. Next Tuesday, um, Langin Engineering is gonna be down there at the Public Works and they're gonna be looking at, I believe hazardous waste transfer station operations to get more information how that works.
I think that's gonna be, if, if I was interpreting the email correctly, that's going to be more, more, uh, file cabinet diving than it is actual
That's what it seemed like, that's what it seemed like.
I didn't want anybody to get their hopes up that it would be another LiDAR exhibit.
It will be both, Keith. Keith, it will be both. Yeah, it will be both. They are going to try to also identify where they're going to do the, the test pores. You know, and that'll be a result of what they, what they read in the ground penetrating radar.
Okay.
I plan to be as available as possible at any of those because I like to see firsthand what's happening. And I've been writing my letters to the paper about what's happening and I want to keep doing that so that there's very transparent, yeah, what we're doing.
And, and also to that point, I, I apologize, uh, to that point of transparency, uh, if it would please the rest of the selectmen, selectwomen. Um, I, I would like in the future for the Public Works Action Committee, I heard you've been doing some recording of things going on there, uh, a video. And I don't know if you have additional information that you can provide to us and maybe like a
The video that we did, that we made
Yeah.
That we weren't allowed to share anymore based on town attorney and advocacy and rules. We're still working through that, uh, what we can and can't share. So it's kind of, kind of, I mean, for me as a public member of the public, I'm kind of saddened by it.
Yeah.
But, um,
Well, you still have to the next That was for the vote, we couldn't use it to promote the vote.
Okay, but yeah, when, when you get the all clear, I think it would be
We don't have any new videos that I'm aware of
Okay.
In the works.
Keith, Keith, if I can, I would like to invite any and all of the selectmen to join us on, uh, the 21st. Uh, that's the next, uh, DPW Action Committee meeting. We will be, as, as Todd so eloquently just explained or so, uh, appropriately displayed, explained, uh, the committee, especially the Communications Subcommittee, of which Todd is a member of, are very confused as to what they can put out, what they can't put out, how they can put it out. So we've invited the town attorney and, uh, the town manager to join us. Uh, and it will be the first thing on the agenda. Uh, and I will copy all of you on the, the agenda. Uh, it will be the first thing and, uh, it'll be him question and answer. And, and Todd, I'm not sure, did the committee send him some questions yet? I know they were talking about it.
David was, David Rose was reaching out to Jody and I today and we found it and he's putting that forward.
Okay, but, uh, it's not only gonna be the committee's job to sell this project. And I say sell because people need to understand all the information. Uh, but it, it will also be, it will also fall on the Board of Selectmen uh, to, to jump on board and help us. Um, so I, I would invite you to both listen and ask any questions you might have, uh, at that meeting. It, as I said, the meeting is on the 21st. The meeting starts at 6:30, it will be, uh, hybrid, so there will be remote access. And, uh, feel free to join us, we'd, we'd, we'd like to have you there. Thank you.
Is the fiscal meeting here in this built in town hall?
Yeah, it, the, yeah, it'll be right in that room where you are right now, Claudia.
It's in my calendar.
That's all I had, Keith.
Awesome, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Todd, thanks for chiming in, I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mel.
Okay. That moves us to the Charter Revision. With, uh, Tiffany, do you have that motion?
I do. There, my, here, I have your changes as well. Uh, so here's the proposed resolution. Uh, be resolved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen accept the Charter Revision as presented by the Charter Revision Commission, incorporating the recommendations of the town attorney and send to referendum on November 4th, 2025 as one or two questions as follows. Question number one, except for the one specific proposed charter amendment stated below for separate vote, shall the town of Hebron adopt the amendments to the Hebron Town Charter as approved by the Board of Selectmen on July 10th, 2025? Question number two, shall the town of Hebron adopt the amendment to the Hebron Town Charter to transition from an elected to an appointed town clerk as approved by the Board of Selectmen on July 10th, 2025?
Okay, and that's gonna again, put us into unfortunately, a lot of discussion. I apologize in advance. Um, because we are accepting the Charter Revision as presented. Um, so that would be the copy that has the town attorney's comments in it as well. And that was part of the latest agenda update. Um, I tried to go through that copy and the, the Charter is a very important document and anybody who has read the book eats, shoots and leaves understands the importance of Thomas. So, um, you know, a lot of this may seem really ridiculous, but it's such, it's essential.
Essential.
It's essential.
Yeah.
So, uh, I brought water.
I thought that was coffee. I'm glad it's water, coffee would dehydrate you though and you wouldn't get through it.
Um, as it is. Um, as it is, bear with me. Feel free to stop me at any time if you have any adjustments. And then we will go into discussion of the questions one and two. But for now, these are the adjustments to the version with the town attorney's updates. Uh, I do make one note, uh, throughout. This doesn't necessarily affect, it, all it affects is readability, so I just made a general comment. Throughout, any double or multiple subsequent spaces should be reduced to single spaces as grammatically required. And that brings us to Section one oh three. Uh, CGS first use and notice. CGS is an abbreviation. It's first defined in Section one oh five E, but both the full and abbreviated terms are first used in Section one oh three. Towny, Town Attorney suggests leaving full language until Section one oh five. Uh, in agreement?
Sure.
Yes, in agreement.
Okay.
We are in agreement with the Town Attorney's suggestion.
Yes.
Section one oh five A, agree with Town Attorney's adjustments. There's a, in addition to the Town Attorney's adjustments, there is a stricken semicolon that should remain at the end of the subsection, Section one oh five A. Agree? Yeah. If at any point, there's a dissent, I know, I feel like I'm gonna say agree thirty-five hundred times.
How about we just say, stop, if we disagree?
Perfect. Section one oh five G, the section G should be removed after the newly inserted G and before the subsection H. Section one oh five H, the second period after H should be removed. Section one oh five I, all subsections of the section should have the same indented formatting. Subsection, Section one oh five J, the second period after J should be removed. Section two oh three subsection A, for consistency, the portion of the sentence consisting of five members should have commas before and after as formatted similar to sections two oh three subsection B, subsection D one, and subsection D four. Or, conversely, the formatting in Chapter two should be consistent with the formatting in Chapter seven, Section seven oh six. Whichever one, they, they both use that consisting of, of X number of members, but we need to figure out the commas on it. The commas need to be entered appropriately. Additionally, on section.
So you are saying on A, that, uh, after the word members, and I totally agree.
Yes, and.
That does make.
And before, before consistent.
Correct.
Yes. Uh, just to make things consistent throughout, in Sections two oh three and Section seven oh six, they both list committees in that format.
Yes.
Um, additionally, Section two oh three subsection A, the second period at the end of the sentence should be removed. Section two oh three subsection C, this subsection was removed, but the following subsections were not reformatted. This is proposed as a separate question. The strike formatting should be consistent in the document, either fully stricken or not. And then whether that question is answered favorably or not in the referendum will determine whether it's.
I was gonna say, and that's, that's the issue there with that second question.
Yep, correct. Uh, but we will cycle back. Section two oh three subsection D, agree with Town Attorney's, agree with Town Attorney's suggestion, remove semicolon with up to, substitute and, to say consistent with other language for alternate members. Subparagraph one should be modified to have a semicolon, not a period at the end. For consistency, subparagraph two and subparagraph three should be formatted to reflect, reflect the grammar of the other subsections. Section two ten, uh, I do not have a preference either way on the Town Attorney's suggestion. Does anyone?
From a, from a communications standpoint, I, I agree with them, the general statutes does sound better instead of ending with a CGS.
Yes, okay, so we will. We will agree with, to keep the Town Attorney's suggestion to strike CGS and to leave it as general statutes spelled out.
All right, some silly question.
Yep.
Just for the record, when we say Town Attorney, who is the Town Attorney? Just for the record.
I mean, we use Hall, we use Haller and Sage. Uh, I think Ken was the one that specifically reviewed the document, or no?
I can't be sure. I, we sent it to him, but he could have paralegal law. Or somebody else.
Someone at Haller and Sage.
Yeah, I can ask him the question. I don't want to not answer truthfully.
Right.
I was sent to him, but.
Honestly, with as big as the document is, it probably was a paralegal.
Yeah, I, I would say.
Yeah.
Um, sorry, another silly question. If, if it was a paralegal that inserted this language or made the edits, we're confident that everything's been reviewed by an attorney and it's all good? We don't know.
We are, we are paying for that. I, I, I mean, I, well, I read a lot of state statute, and so in reviewing the Charter, nothing jumped out at me as being blatantly crazy. Um, and so I feel confident having Haller and Sage provide a second review. You know, so I, I, I don't feel like, I don't feel like it was, and again, not to belittle the contributions of the Charter Revision Commission. I mean, we have had quite a few people looking at it. Again, not necessarily all lawyers, but with varying degrees of experience with statutory language.
To be honest, he, he looked at the meat and potatoes, and what we're doing now, I think a lot of us would have also got, in, in defense, would have got caught in formatting once it was completed, but.
Yeah, no, but I just, because we're voting on it, I wanna make sure that, because I don't, I mean, technically, letter of the law, if we just vote approve without making amendments as stated, all of these are in there. So, uh, but yes, to answer your question, uh, I feel fairly confident. I, I don't.
You know, say, it, it's, it's an agency that is taking on that liability.
Yep. Um, so, okay, so that we, uh, keep, keep attorney, keep attorney. Okay, got it. Uh, Section three oh three A, there is a stricken comma which should remain. Uh, Section three oh three subsection B, this conflicts with language in Section nine oh five subsection B and Section nine oh nine, which say current year's budget excluding the amount appropriated for the regional school district. These sections should have consistent language. Um, and I believe that consistent language is the newly made definition in Section one oh five. So, um, the new language that I, I would prefer to be consistent throughout the document is to say the current year's town and HBOE budget, correct? Objections?
No.
Perfect. Uh, additionally, Section three oh three subsection B, remove excess comma before semicolon at end of subsection. Uh, Section three oh four subsection A, two parentheses, two parentheses percent should be modified to be uniform with other numerical designations throughout the document. Section three oh five subsection B, the space between town and council should not be removed. The space between town and council. All right, that's throwing me for, who's, who's got that page up?
I mean, I have it here.
And I'm trying to find one that does, that has.
Do you think this is wrapping and running into each other?
Is it at the end?
Yeah, that's what I.
I see town, town hyphen council? Yes, the hyphen. The hyphen means that the space was stricken. Do not, yes, the hyphen.
No, that one.
Wait, which one am I on? Three oh five?
Three oh five.
Oh, it's on, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Uh, second from the last line, beginning of the line. That one, yes, this one.
Oh.
That means, that means that the space was stricken. Do not strike that space. Very important space.
Oh, yeah, there it is.
Okay, I, I knew I, yep, you're good.
Yeah.
Uh, I know I put that there for a reason, then. Uh, Section.
Yeah, I had it written at twelve o'clock at night.
That's not easy.
That's not easy.
Section four oh two subsection J, insert, uh, this is, this is something that I would like to suggest, uh, this is not in the document, so if I could have everyone's attention, this is a suggestion for myself. Uh, I would like to insert a subsection J to review and approve or deny interdepartmental and intradepartmental transfers pursuant to the guidelines in Section nine oh six of this charter. The Board of Selectmen does have the authority, and it's described in Section nine oh six, but it's not described under our general duties. And I believe that that is a very important part of the budgetary authority that we have. And so I believe that even though it exists in Section nine oh six currently, it needs to be recognized in both sections, Section four oh two and Section nine oh six. So that is to insert a new J. And then, of course, because I inserted that, I apologize in advance, Section four oh two J, relabel as sec- as subsection K. And then you'd have an L. Yes, and Section four oh two K, relabel as subsection L. All right. Section four oh three, remove comma before the first word, at. Uh, agree with Town Attorney's suggestion to not capitalize special meaning of the Town Council. Okay. Uh, Section four oh four, legal writing of compound numbers should be twenty hyphen first, not twenty space first. Also, parentheses, twenty-one, uh, superscript S T, end parentheses, is not consistent with other numbering throughout and should be modified to just parentheses to one, close parentheses. Uh, Section four oh five subsection C, ten parentheses, one zero parentheses percent should be modified to be uniform with other numerical designations throughout the document. Section four oh six, uh, and we can have some discussion here. I personally disagree with the Town Attorney's assessment, but an acceptable alternate that I would propose to their designee, I think maybe we should put the term acting town manager in there rather than designee. This is consistent with the language in Section six oh one subsection A, where it says that the town manager's designee is instructed to act on their behalf and could further be defined in Section one oh five, the term acting town manager, to solidify it even further. Any comment on that suggestion?
I'll turn to Andy.
So there's, there's two instances. That, that's like, if somebody were to retire or leave, then you would bring in like an acting town manager, you would have that ninety days or whatever.
Okay.
I think, and I could correct you, her interpretation, she was on the Charter Revision, but my interpretation of that is in there now. It's if I were to go on vacation and leave the country, I would have to designate my designee. Yes, fill that while I'm out of the country.
Yep.
Now, whether that constitutes naming them an acting town manager or just, just like designate you while out of the.
I think using acting town manager could create some confusion. So I think if we're, if we don't wanna use the word there.
Yep.
We could just say the town manager or.
Designers.
Or the town manager, sorry, designee.
Yeah.
I think the town managers, designees work. Yeah.
I'd be okay.
I'll, I'll be okay with that. Yeah, questions?
Sorry. No, thank you.
You're on the committee.
Oh, no.
You need to be recognized. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm sorry.
Are we good with that?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good happy meeting. Yeah.
Uh, so if you're gonna turn that over to Mick, your note, I know, I know. So we decided to go with just designee or to restate town manager's designee?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Restate. Town manager. Designee. All right, so then we are going to get rid of that. I still have stuff on Section four oh six, though. Oh, okay, Section four oh six. Uh, space being removed after town council and before may declare in the first sentence should remain. Yes. Section four oh seven, should be sixty hyphen first parentheses, six one parentheses, egg. Uh, Section five oh two subsection C, end with comma pursuant to subsection nine oh six, uh, not hyphen, semicolon, I apologize, not hyphen, ended with semicolon. Uh, Section five oh three, agree with Town Attorney's recommendation?
Yeah, that was fine.
Okay. Uh, Section six oh one subsection A, the first sentence has the period stricken. It should be retained. Uh, Section six oh one subsection B, for conformity, use twenty hyphen four parentheses, twenty-four parentheses, hours. Uh, Section seven oh three, I think the new sentence that, that's a new sentence that is proposed by the Charter Revision Committee?
Yeah.
Seven oh three? Okay, uh, I think the new sentence needs better comma placement. My suggestion is, any vacancy on any town board, comma, irrespective of cause, comma, should be filled as soon as practical, comma, after the acceptance of any resignation or the determination of said vacancy, comma, by vote of the town council for the unexpired portion of said term.
Yep, that's it to me.
I'm not sure if we need one between practical and, between cow, yeah, practical and after.
Yeah, but that.
Shall be filled as soon as practical after. As soon as practical.
Yeah, but that's a separate.
I'm trying to.
Cause, cause see, all right, shall be filled as soon as practical by vote of the town council. See, that's, that's a natural continuation. We're putting a sub, a sub thought in there of after the acceptance of any resignation or determination. You know what I mean?
Correct.
But you can, if, if there was, or if we had already determined that there was an acceptance of a resignation or determination of vacancy, then we would just say filled as soon as practical by vote of the town council, right? Okay.
Of course, man.
It's not sure there's a grammatical rule that makes sense. Cause you have a separate sub clause that.
I mean, I, I, I am, you know, very, very into the Oxford comma, so.
Wow.
Isn't there a dabble somewhere?
Yeah, you have a dabble.
It hasn't been used in years.
Might have to use. An unruly member of the public.
I'm here as the chair of the.
Yeah, if it pleases the board, would the Chair of the Charter Commission like to come up? Is this, okay, that. Okay, Section seven oh six, grammar on these subsections should conform with previous grammar from other board describing sections of the Charter. This was what we, I had discussed in the, uh, Section three oh three B. So seven oh six and three oh three need to.
Okay, um, I'm just, and I, I am trying to formulate my thoughts here. If we approve those changes, can we approve this document without those changes being made?
And I mean, as long as they're listed as instructions to be followed, I, I.
Saying, you know, we're saying that we are moving this document forward.
I mean, we can ask for, for a, for a finished document.
I'm just saying, do we need to have a finished document before we can send it forward?
I mean.
I'm just, you know, procedurally, I'm just, just asking a question.
I'm fine with it. I would like to see a finished document.
I would too.
Or do we have time in the schedule for that?
We have to get this prepared for publication. We have to publish the entire, well, we have to publish the proposed changes in the, usually put an insert in the reveries.
Yeah.
This Charter Revision is the most extensive thing that we've had in a while. We're there, we're gonna publish them.
Okay.
So, I mean, we are gonna be preparing the. So, I mean, we are going to be preparing the document for publication, making incorporating these changes. And, and as Andy said, this is. This is a red line. It is not in its final format. Before this gets. Published, before it get, goes to the printer, it is going to be in. It's perfect format as it.
Okay, can we, so we could modify.
For publication, we will work these modifications into it, we'll send it out.
But should we table tonight then?
No, I think you can approve it if you all agree.
With the recommended modifications.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, just trying to get a clarification.
Keep it moving over.
Okay, once, but once we approve, I mean, kind of like we can't go backwards, once we approve it. We, we can't, we can't, if, if I miss something, or if it's not. If we can't show that, that final document was not following the published with the modifications and instructions. We've already approved it, there's no way to revisit that at that point, is there? So should we table it? I'm sorry.
Would you like to call on the chair, the charter revision commission?
Heather Pettit.
As chair of the board or two. Um, you can modify the motion to accept the revisions of the charter commission after you're done discussing everything. And say you're doing it as discussed and then it's. As you discussed it and it made these changes.
But if we miss something and we're looking at a final document three weeks from now.
Do you mean additional changes in, in addition to what we're agreeing on tonight?
I mean.
Because if when we're fit, when we're cleaning this up and we send it, get it ready. For publication, we send it back to you if you.
Okay, so it gets a final approval.
Okay.
Just let us know, you know, you missed age thirteen, this.
So we still have an option for our final approval.
It just can't be additional to this.
Right.
So, okay, how do you feel?
Keep moving. We're good.
Okay. Alright.
Like raw high, keep it moving.
We're good, we're good with the commas, right? Uh, section seven oh three, we're good?
Yes.
Section seven oh six. Oh no, I was on section seven oh six, grammar on these subsections should, should match subsection three oh three, I think it was. Three oh three, yes. Uh. Section seven oh six subsection F, agree with town attorney's changes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, section seven oh six subsection G, remove the I period between the new subsection G and subsection H. And format the spacing accordingly. Section seven oh nine, remove, do we need to definte for cause? Question mark, accept town attorney's adjustment with the modification to add will be. Between, oh, this is where I had. I, I like his suggestion, but I had one small modification. Do you have seven oh nine? Yes. On seven oh nine, on the. Thank you. Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, doesn't have.
That doesn't have it, this has the time.
Town attorney, okay. He, yeah, the town attorney added like a paragraph. Uh. Alright.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so that the town attorney's suggestion starts reasons for cause to remove one or more. I would add will be. Between the remove and one, so the new language would say reasons for cause to remove. Will be one or more of the following. Is everybody good with that modification? Okay.
Yeah.
And then section seven oh nine, remove extra period at the end of the suggested, suggested language. Section seven oh nine subs. Sorry, yes.
Adam, did you want to?
Oh, yeah, he had something.
Cause Adam did send a letter about this.
Yeah.
So I, I did send the letter, I, I don't copy it, but I don't know if that was distributed to you.
Yes, it was.
Uh, my, my, my feeling on this was that we had discussed whether, uh, for cause already had a legal definition that this was invoking. Uh, based on the county attorney's comments, it sounds like there is not an existing. Definition that can be invoked, so I think it would be very, I want to be very careful in constructing. The, uh.
Yes.
Uh, the reasons for remove. And I believe it is you, uh, within your power to, at this point, to discuss what you want those reasons to be. Will you want it to be very permissive? And say, and allow the board of the town council dismiss of the appointed, uh, board member for. Any different reasons. Whether this is this town, uh, this board of selectmen that becomes a town council or one ten years down the road. Or you want it to be, you want to protect those that have already been employed at least until they do their terms. Uh, from partisan or arbitrary removal just because. The new board comes in and doesn't like somebody that's already been appointed.
Now, what is, my question is, and I don't remember it, was it a super majority? For removal or just a majority? And I thought it was a super majority.
We, in our, if I recall correctly, in our original draft, we bumped it up to a super majority. And, uh, it came back to us because, uh, you disagreed, this board disagreed with, uh, the super majority for this.
I'm going to talk to you in seconds.
To, yeah, to.
Away, away from two thirds.
Yeah.
It's a simple majority.
We did, but then we went.
But the premise of that was that for cause had a very specific legal meaning that would protect the. Now attorney seems to tell us that's not the case, that we're not invoking. A specific meaning, so. I'm going back to the point of let's protect the, uh, in speaking on my back. Let's protect the appointed board members from arbitrary removal. I have a very limited, uh, set of reasons. Uh, whom we can, uh, remove for cause.
My, my only concern there is if you are locked into a very limited. Number of reasons. Are we tying our hands when all of a sudden something bizarre comes about and you say, yo, this, this person needs to go, we can't. Or my other question is. For this one section, can we? Uh, enact a super majority and I, I don't know what the answers are. I'm just throwing out those two possibilities.
So we, our original draft uses super majority, so that would, that could be an option. Uh, the, uh, if you fa- I, to respond to, if you found, if the town council found, if. Found a reason that wasn't specified that somebody needed to go. That is one concern. And the opposing concern again is that a future town council. Wants somebody to go or.
Correct.
Because they didn't like somebody.
Yeah, and I, and I understand, I understand that and I understand protecting, uh, you know, that individual. So I, I see both ways and I'm just trying to figure out what, what makes the most sense, what's the most logical approach? A, that you don't tie your hands, but B, that you don't, uh, turn it into a witch hunt.
Correct.
So I, I see both sides of it and I'm not sure what the best way to do it. And as I say, if possibly a super majority on this one issue. Might be. A way around it. Um, and that would just mean adding a clause in the percentages or, or however that wording is. That for the, for the sake of section, uh. Seven oh nine, whatever, uh, a super majority vote would be required for, for said removal of.
I agree with, with Adam that I think this definition that we're considering adding is very broad. And open to interpretation and. Different, um, individuals have. Um, different opinions and tolerances on some of this definition. So I would, if we are going to include it, I would want to see it trimmed back.
Trimmed back as, as far as.
To take out, you know, like such a, such as disregarding parliamentary dis- decisions or misconduct during meetings. That can.
Open up a whole can.
Because what one person considers appropriate conduct, somebody else finds perfectly acceptable.
Right.
So I just think this definition is much too broad.
Dishonesty, I mean, what do we mean by dishonesty? Do we mean, are you lying when? You're sitting here talking to the public, does it mean dishonesty when you're out in the general public and you're not sitting in your meeting? So that would be, I mean, I'm not, I'm not a huge fan in general of super majorities. I think I've made that clear because I think it, it sets, you know, a, a massive. You know, barrier for us to kind of do the things that we as the board of selectmen need to good, need to do. But in this case, I would consider an exception to the super majority. But I also still think that this definition needs to be trimmed. I, I think in this instance, I would support doing both to your point. I, I think we might need to do both.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, it's.
Yeah.
Without a definition of for cause, the super majority sounds appropriate. Is it, cause at that point now we are relying upon. Opinions of members.
Right.
Our discussion at charter revision also when we were talking about, did we need a definition? Did we understand what it would be? Was that we believe that in most cases before the selectman would take this action. It would be run by the attorney to make sure that there was loss. So that we may not need the definition if we. Practice that.
Yeah, we still would need to have something to put before.
Yeah, I, I, I think we still need a definition for cause here, but I, but I think that. If we can, if we can narrow it a little bit and add in a super majority in this one instance, I would feel comfortable with that. I do think it's critical to define for cause because that's a specific term that's used. Across industries and I do think we need to define it in this. But this may be one of those rare instances that we consider putting back in a super majority in this limited case. I, I think, I think you have to keep some kind of definition. Not an attorney, but that's what I.
That is, I think it's logical.
Yeah.
You know, I just, I just do, you want to protect the person at the same time.
Yeah.
You know, we, you know, I, I, I know people that quite literally own property in town where they haven't been in town for years. You know, and, yeah, it's, it, it's created issues on boards. Because. Uh, here.
Hmm.
Um, you know, we're not going to get any names or anything, but, uh. Yeah, it, it, it hinders the flow of government. And.
If I may, I, I did provide some sample language in that letter. However, I do not pretend that that sample language in my, this potential for cause is, is perfect, so. I am happy to hear. The, uh, the various reasons being discussed, discussed and debated, even if it doesn't land in exactly the same wording that I had, uh, listed. Because it was written.
I, I do not, I did not print out your letter, I apologize. Would you just read? I'm sorry, is it okay to?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Well, no, I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah, no.
I mean, outside the parliamentary procedure, you get.
No, 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 no.
Finger slap.
Not yet, not yet, but still.
Charter did have that super majority originally, but then took it, changed it back when we got the.
Right.
Letter from.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, well, while they're preparing for that, I'll kind of add my two cents. Um, you know, I, I am not a huge fan of super majority. I mean, it has to be a very compelling reason for something like that. Um, I, I also think that. You know, the, the charter is a living document that every five years we go through this review process and it, it grows with the town. I mean, in the past, the, the previous, you know, uh, wording was very ambiguous. And now we are at least are putting in. Something for people to kind of wrap their head around of what this ambiguous term is. Um, but I mean, even, and, and I'll let you get to your, to your language. You know, there's always going to be in charter and statute and other legal documents, there's always going to be that gray area, even in, even in the suggested language. That, that you have, um, so. And each person is going to interpret it.
Yeah.
You know, per the situation and per their, per their experience, so. Uh. I, I, I don't know that we should. I, I, I agree, this is an important document, I think this is a step forward as opposed to previous ones. If there's specific suggestions, I'm open to it, but I also think that the town attorney did a good job of. Throwing some stuff in here. Just to kind of put some framework around it. Um, but please go.
And, and, and give the town attorney credit, I think it was probably just a misunderstanding between your board, our board and him. About our, uh, uh, what we were really looking for is a protection for our appointed board members. Uh, I'm not going to read unless you really need me to, I'm not going to read my whole letter because it's two pages, but I will read an excerpt. My counterproposal for a for cause definition is. Reasons to remove an appointed board member for cause include. Death. Dish- dishonesty in official duties. Be needing misconduct during meetings such as disregarding parliamentary decisions of the chair. Conviction of a crime that would undermine the public confidence in the member. And violation of the code of ethics found in chapter eleven of this charter. Now, we've already discussed some of those and there are pluses and minuses for several of them, I, I admit that. But this is a, uh. First attempt.
Yeah.
And I'm happy for the discussion.
Well, death is death and. You know, it goes back, that, that seat is open, so that doesn't need to be there.
I, I, I can, I consider writing a little bit more about that. I think it's sort of using incapacity, writing death because it's first of all, less subjective and second of all, of permanence, but.
Well, incapacity is not mentioned, but that is.
It was in the, uh, it was in the, uh, town attorney's draft.
Yeah, which again, um, you know, we've had people that have. Have suffered unfortunately, yeah.
This is true.
Situations that made them unable to continue on their duties. And there's nothing saying that they can't stay a member.
There is.
Okay.
The following section, uh, section seven ten. Uh. Uh, addresses a case where somebody does not attend, uh, in consecutive meetings. So it may not be a neat and immediate removal.
Yeah.
But if there is any. Uh. Question or shenanigans played by our future, hopefully very far future town council about whether somebody's actually incapacitated or not. At least if they're. If they think that they might come back and they're not, they're not resigning. They will be naturally, uh, removed under section seven ten, which gives a lot more. The way in fact makes it a bit more automatic to remove the person for not attending.
Three, yeah, the three consecutive, you know, if you have somebody that's going overseas for a month.
Yes, yeah.
You know, they may not be around for three consecutive, so would that. Require, or I would assume that that would, uh, that, that they would be issued a, a pardon or excuse for their absence. Uh, yeah, I just.
I believe seven ten does have.
Has to be.
An excuse.
And it, it could be an excuse, yes.
Right.
So they notify us, there's good cause for their absence or.
I'm just trying to play both sides of this to, you know, to get, you know.
As you should.
Yep.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm open to negotiation on this, um, I, I just think. It's, it's all going to have some sort of, you know, cause again, the, the parliamentary decisions was part of the suggestion.
Yeah.
Uh, and, you know, I, I do agree, I definitely think that we need to keep in the, the undermining of the public confidence. Uh, but on the other hand, I agree that. Uh, but on the other hand, I agree that, that allowing. Members of boards to have dissenting opinions is part of a vibrant democracy. And that, uh. You know, they do serve a purpose for the residents of the town. In, in having that alternate viewpoint. Um, so. I, I don't. I don't necessarily know. I mean, I, I also want a chair of a board or a committee or a commission to be able to conduct their board in an orderly fashion. According to parliamentary procedure. So. I mean. But, but again, I, I see where, I see where it can be interpreted. I don't know.
Well, if we do the super majority for this one instance.
I make you feel better or worse.
It takes four people. To remove somebody.
Yeah. In, in. In this one instance.
And that's the, the justice.
Right.
Exactly. But I'm, I'm thinking about recent events or possible events where we would actually legitimately want to remove somebody. Because they're, they're preventing the town from moving forward. And it's not politically motivated. And the only thing I can think of is, is certain persons. That were in a state of either incapacity or non-attendance. Those are the only ones that I can think of in, in recent time. So. I mean. If we, if we want to narrow it down to something like that, to keep in, you know. Incapacity, dereliction of duty, a crime that undermines the confidence. Like, like those are some of the ones.
I mean, I even hesitate with them. Just if we're going to talk about it. I mean, making inappropriate comments, right? Like. If somebody finds inappropriate, someone might find appropriate and, um. I don't know, I'm, um.
I don't want to get that down far in the weeds.
I, I, yeah.
Think you're going down a rabbit hole that.
Yeah. No, I know. I just. There was something about it that struck me, but. I mean, I, I, for me, if we were to keep this definition. But change it to be a super majority. I mean, that's a, that's a compromise I could probably, that I could live with. I just don't. Know how y'all feel. I'm open to any kind of compromise here.
Well, as I say, um, I'm, I'm in favor of super majority for this one instance. So. Sure. Uh, well, I'm a little stuck on the last phrase of.
It's the catchall.
Yeah, but it's a catchall. It is literally a catchall. It's not. Right. You know, it's not that dismemberment, loss of a figure. It's whatever we feel. As a majority. Then the super majority have to agree with?
Yes.
Yes.
Based on that wording, so. Just three members say, yes, this is a good reason. Four members would have to agree with it based on the suggestion of having a super majority.
Yes.
Yes.
Seems a bit convoluted, but. I don't. Have enough reason to disagree with your assessment. I, I mean, I, if we are put.
Like a hard copy of this, you can compare against the.
I have, I have electronic. Sorry. I've got my, uh. Ostensibly a phone, but it's the size of. I'm, I'm, I'm willing to go along with the super majority if we keep. The definition as is, but if we're going to. Spend more time to refine the definition. Then I think we need to refine it to a point where the board feels comfortable with a fair majority.
I agree.
So which do we want to do at eight fifty-five? I will leave it up to the floor.
I mean. We never want to do things the simplest always or the quickest. Seems to me in this instance, since we have language from the town attorney. If everybody can agree to in this one instance that it's a super majority. That clears it up quickly and then we reduce the back and forth in terms of. Can you narrow this? Can you cut this? What, what pieces should we cut? Because. You, you know, my reactions to various language, other folks aren't going to have, right? And so. The, the quickest tonight would be. Keep the lang, keep the language that the town attorney has recommended. And put this in this one instance to a super majority.
And we'll let the next charter revision commission.
Open it up and see.
Get their arms around.
That, that. That would be my recommendation at eight fifty-six at night. But I'm open if everybody else wants to go back. I think language is so important. As someone who does this for a living, I think it's important, but to me. If we're looking for a way to resolve this and move on with the rest of your changes and try to get, you know, a document rolling for the November vote. That would be what I would recommend. And I personally would be comfortable with moving forward in that direction. I agree with.
All right. We will. Get back to my document. Hold on. Okay. So we are not, we are going to accept the town attorney's adjustment with the modification will be. In the second sentence. Um, remove extra period at the end of the suggested language and. Change. Affirmative vote of three members to affirmative vote of four members.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to point something out to you just for, just for your own information. I'm not sure you're aware of it. It's different from this, but. Not knowing how long this was going to take, you know, when I ever tried to rush this, but we do have. Other town staff waiting for other items. I didn't know if you wanted. Although they go back or. Fire chief and the.
Yep.
Planner been sitting here.
I apologize.
No, it's not your fault. I probably.
Yep.
Fooled them up, but I didn't think it was going to be this long.
Okay. Yeah, let us, uh. No, I, I agree. I don't want them staying on here till ten o'clock. Um, all right. Let's, we are going to table it at section seven oh nine.
Okay.
And we will come back to this after we. Move to section eight D Horton Property Master Plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, also the Hebron Economic Development incentive. I really don't need to talk much about that. At just the first glance. And we wanted to let you know for transparency that we will, at the town planner, we'll bring that to EDC. Next week and that'll be on your next agenda. So we just wanted to let you know that.
What agenda item are we on, right?
Okay. I, we were on eight D. Was there anything on eight D?
Is there anything on eight D?
Eight, eight D Horton Master Plan? Are we?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's up, it's up to Tiffany. We supply the information. If that's something you want to talk to Matt about, yes, you should go to that.
As long as this is. The, the actual master plan that we are working with moving forward, and this is something that the public has access to. I think that's fine. My only question from the last meeting to reiterate was there were multiple versions of the same plan going around in different places. So if this is the plan, that's totally fine. As long as moving forward, this is the plan we're working with.
Okay, so this is the official, this is the official.
That was all I wanted to know.
Yeah, I didn't mean to jump over that. I didn't know if you had any other questions from the information.
I'm happy to clarify.
Okay. Any other old business? Okay, uh, nine A Hebron Economic Development Incentive Program.
Once again, I can explain that. If you have any questions, Matt, that's just something that's going to be coming in front of us. There's been some statute changes. We've supplied in the packet, so they're going to be taking that up underneath their next meeting, which will be next week. And we're going to have some input from the town attorney. We just wanted to let you know that was coming, so be prepared. That should be on the next board's agenda. Or discuss what, what you want to do to change.
Okay, perfect. Um, and then nine B, approve addendum to Town of Hebron, Connecticut Employee Handbook of Personal. Personnel. Policies and procedures for firefighters, EMTs, terms and conditions. And on that one, we do have a motion. We are on Claudia.
Sorry. Need water?
Well, thank you. The proposed motion moved that the Hebron Board Selectmen. By approved the revision. Firefighters slash EMTs terms and conditions of employment addendum. The Town of Hebron, Connecticut Employee Handbook of Personnel Policies and Procedures. November seventh, twenty nineteen revision as presented.
Eddie. Did you have something to present, Andy, or?
Fire chief does. He, he worked on this with the town's labor attorney. So, uh, you start, Kell, if you're available.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So. As, as Andy mentioned, we, we made some changes or requesting some changes be made to the addendum. Uh, which we put in place last July, July twenty-four. Um, just due to some, some changes with our, our work schedules, the number of hours that our, that our folks are working. And I just want to go down through the, the, the sections that where there are actually changes made. And, and the, and the first section would be the, the work schedule section. So in that section, the, the town labor attorneys, attorney Nick Corello and Sean Maloney. Added in language, the first paragraph of that section, they added language regarding. The FLSA exemption for firefighters, which essentially allows firefighters to work. Greater than forty hours per week and, and not be subject to overtime. So our, our firefighters are, are, are going to be working forty-eight hour weeks. And that FL, FLSA exemption allows them to do that and, and without having to pay them overtime for those additional eight hours. So the attorneys wanted that section of the FLSA exemption added into this document. The second paragraph in that section just details the forty-eight hour work week. Um, that our full-time folks are going to be working. And then the third paragraph talks about how our per diem staff. Uh, the shifts that they will be working to, to fill in the gaps. The, the second. Section that actually had changes was in the paid time off section. And at the recommendation of, of the attorneys, because these folks are working more hours per week. They recommended that their PTO hours. Be increased accordingly. And it worked out to where, because of the eight hours more per week that they're going to be working. On an annual basis that basically equated to twenty more hours of PTO time. So that, that paid time off section was, was amend, was amended. And then the other, other change was in the holiday section. Right now, our, 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 our paid staff. There's only four holidays where, where they would get holiday pay versus the thirteen that are included in the Town Employee Handbook. And the only change to that section was because we do have per diem folks that work on holidays as well. Uh, there was language added to that section that indicated that if you do work one of those, those four holidays, which are New Year's. Independence Day, Thanksgiving Day and Christmas Day. Um, that you're, you're subject to, or you're, you would receive compensation at time and a half. So tho, those are the only sections in that document where we made, um. Substantial changes to, um, and again, this was done in conjunction with the, the labor attorneys, um. So if anybody has any particular questions about any of those sections, I can certainly go back and address those.
Hi, Pete's Claudia. I just had one quick question.
Sure.
Policies and procedures, compensation, holidays, PTO, is that effective? Certain date?
So typically this would be effective as of the dates that, that it's approved. Um, we, we tried, we tried, but everyone's busy. We tried to get it in, in as of seven one, the start of our fiscal year, but. Uh, at this point, you know, if it were approved, we would probably start this process. You know, next week or as of eight one.
So, I mean, additional questions?
Well, knowing fire departments do work, uh, different types of, of schedules. It's, it's fairly routine, fairly normal. Uh, for this type of, of scheduling. For personnel, so. I, I understand it. Understand with it.
Bow to Dan's long experience as a fire marshal. All right. Without any further discussion, Dan Larson.
Uh, Dan Larson, I.
Sean Fitzgerald.
Sean Fitzgerald, I.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, I.
Bodhi Riley.
Bodhi Riley, I.
Heath Bennett, I. S is unanimously and. That brings us back to.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That brings us back to eight C. All right.
Almost there.
Love it.
Yeah, look at me.
Dan, while you had stepped out, we agreed to accept the town attorney's language as suggested. But modify the requirement to four members. Okay. Good. Okay. Section seven oh nine subsection A, the space after town council is marked for deletion. It should remain. Uh, section seven ten, the documented attempt should be by USPS. Several instances of bad email handling have been noticed in the past. This has led to previous mishandling of notices because they go to the wrong email address. An attempt may include email notification, but for the purposes of declaring a vacancy. USPS should be the standard. The town attorney's suggested language. Uh, refers to a town. Uh, email which not all officials have or frequently use Town of Hebron email addresses. Uh, his suggested language should be accepted, but modified to. At the email address on record with the town clerk or town manager for the member comma and. By registered or certified mail to the address of the member on file with the town tax collector.
Makes sense.
I agree.
Essentially plus a bit longer than that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, section eight oh three subsection B, agree with town attorney's modification? Okay. Section eight oh five, the space after town attorney in both the third and fifth sentences. Marked for deletion should remain in the sixth sentence. There should be a comma after town council. I know, that's a long one. We're good with the comma after town council?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, section nine oh two subsection B. This is, this is something that has been a longstanding tradition and I don't know the current board's appetite for it. But I'm going to suggest it anyways. For general consumption, we should examine if we want to convert the days to calendar days. Right now, it says one hundred and fifty days before June thirtieth. My suggestion is to change that to a standardized January thirty-first. So it would be changed to on or before January thirty-first, the head of each. Yada, yada, yada. Rather than a hundred and fifty days before.
Yeah, I agree. Let's be clear.
Okay. Uh, which brings us to the same thing. Section nine oh two subsection C, modify the second sentence to read. Upon completion of the review and not later than March first. The town manager, continue that sentence. Section nine oh two subsection E, modify the last sentence to say no later than April first. To consistently move away from the days before fiscal year end length. Okay. Section nine oh five subsection B, language is inconsistent with sections three oh three subsection B and sections nine oh nine and should say. Town and HBOE budget. Improperly refers to section three oh four B. It should refer to three oh three B. When invoking special town meeting. And I honestly, I recommend not even putting a subsection on there. I think we should just say. Reference section three oh three. Special town meetings. Objections?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, section nine oh six subsection C, remove the and. Between the two paragraphs of subsection C, item two. And make the following paragraph subsection C, item three. Rela, relabel subsection C, item three to subsection C, item four. And then I would like, this is something for us to approve or deny. Reword section C, item three, as follows. All requests which exceed the cumulative limit of ten thousand dollars shall be reviewed by the town manager, who shall forward such requests to the town council. The town council shall review and have the power to deny the request. If the town council does not deny the request, the council shall move to forward it to the board of finance with any comments or recommendations who shall have the power to approve or deny such requests. It just makes it stop at us before it goes to finance.
I agree.
Essentially following subsection two's rules. Because this is a larger amount.
It is a larger amount, so it needs like a double approval.
Right.
Well, the two thousand requires our approval anyway.
Yes.
Currently, ten thousand doesn't.
Yes.
Right.
And it probably shouldn't.
I agree.
Yes.
Your warning says stay set.
Yep.
In a roundabout, very lengthy kind of way, yes.
Well, in a legal, in a legal way, yours does.
Okay. Everybody's good with that?
I'm good with that.
Section nine oh seven, the word or should be inserted in front of agencies. Section nine oh nine should have language consistent with three oh three subsection B and nine oh five subsection B, town and HBOE budget. Section nine ten subsection B. I'm unaware of the reason for the change and agree with the town attorney's assessment of defining or removing. I know. What's up?
You know, that's fair.
It is an undefined term with no accepted legal meaning. Oh, we inserted the term short-term financing. Charter revision commission, do you have comments?
A suggestion from the town finance director. For clarity.
Okay, the town attorney disagrees. I'm inclined to agree with the town attorney.
I am too absent a compelling reason.
Absent.
I think it was just for clarity reasons.
I, if I may, if I were to correct the longer financing, longer bonds require a much more rigorous thing, whether it's a town meeting or a referendum. So if we're saying the town council can recommend the word finance to issue bond or notes, it would seem to me that that would be required to be a year or less.
I mean, depending on the value or the length of the note, other portions of the charter might be invoked that already exist. I don't know that this language would prevent those other sections from being invoked. I don't know, without.
I don't think it belongs to.
I was willing to agree with the town attorney.
I'm willing to go.
I'll agree with the town attorney.
Yeah, charter commission is kind of not.
Unless just town attorney wins. We are removing it. Removing. Section eleven oh four, grammatically, the portion of the first sentence up to the first comma should be reconfigured to no person governed by this code shall use their position or office for their own financial gain or personal interests, comma, or to benefit. And then it continues on with other things.
I wish.
Okay. I'm seeing a lot of.
I just.
Yep. Okay.
Just read that again. I just.
No person governed by this code shall use their position or office for their own financial gain or personal interests, comma, or to benefit. And then I think it goes into like friends, family.
Okay. I'm just, I just want to verify that we are not saying a company of which a person is a part of cannot do a bid proposal or whatever.
Well, this says you can't, it's not saying they can't do a bidder proposal. It's saying that you can't use your position to benefit it. So we recuse ourselves?
Yes.
So you would recuse yourself and be.
Yeah.
Third paragraph references that unless it is awarded through a process of public notice and or. Yes. It is already, your question is answered later. I've made note of that because. As a tradesman.
Exactly.
With a contract with the town.
Right.
I. We have multiple. We are a up-thriving town.
Right?
But yes, because this could possibly, as a tradesman, affect me, I'd pay special attention to eleven oh four, eleven oh five.
Okay.
All right, section twelve eleven subsection A, agree with town attorney that the phrase acting town clerk is confusing. It should be removed and the first sentence should start, the town clerk as of October first. The second sentence should start, they shall continue to perform the duties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Section twelve eleven subsection B, this transition language is confusing as well. The reduction in the number of members on the commission of aging would normally be addressed through appointments pursuant to section seven oh three, which will take place at the first town council meeting following the adoption of the new charter. I recommend striking the entire, striking twelve eleven B.
Twelve eleven.
Yes. Because it's going to get resolved by appointment process. It's an appointed board.
Wrong.
So the meeting after the election, we would just say, you're reappointed, you're reappointed, done. This is the reducing from seven to five?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Can we just go back to A? Because I want to be sure you get this right.
Yes. Subsection A, agree with town attorney that the phrase acting town clerk is confusing. It should be removed and the first and.
So the question is, the acting town clerk at the beginning of that sentence, our current, our current serving town clerk is the acting town clerk. She is not the town clerk. She is the acting. Because she's spilling the.
The term.
Term of.
Yeah.
So that was specifically written that way. The current title, the current town clerk is the act.
Does the state review that?
The state reviewed this language. The town, the acting town clerk prepared this language.
Yep.
We ran it and she ran it by the secretary of state's office. So I just want to make.
So to your point, the town attorney messed it up.
Or the paralegal.
Or the paralegal.
I think he's referring to this, the.
The transition. Which I think, I agree with him, that language should come out.
Okay, so the second sentence should start, they shall continue.
Or the second sentence just starts as town clerk, the former acting clerk.
Acting town.
Acting town.
I think the town, the town attorney's recommendation works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Too.
So this slight change makes clear that the transition town clerk, acting, the transition acting clerk will be the town clerk. That's why this says.
That is confusing. All right, okay, so we will strike. We will just take the town attorney's.
Adjustment.
As written.
Yep.
Okay. All right, town attorney has written.
I do agree with getting rid of B. It seems superfluous in that same section.
Okay. Got it. And that's it.
Oh.
Wow.
All right, everybody, wake up.
We are so fortunate that you took the time to go through that. And I think people should know too. Like, this is such a critical document and it is important that we took, you know, the hour fifteen to go through it very carefully. So thank you for doing this and getting it to us. I think so, if I'm estimating.
I must. It's all good. It's like work.
So with that in mind, let's go back to that tabled motion.
Okay.
And digging for it. Hold on. This is a gigantic.
I've got it.
All right. I'm almost there.
You are almost there.
You listen? Yes, thank you. Okay, so the resolution as it was, was to accept the charter revision. So I am making an amendment to that motion with the suggested changes.
It would suggest a friendly amendment to her motion.
Yep. And then if we need to have discussion on questions one and question two. Any comments or suggestions on question one or question two?
I think it makes sense to split them. I think that, you know.
Yes.
I do. I think it makes sense to split it. So I'm fine with the two questions. I think to add any more would be superfluous. And I think I don't think one question suffices in this case because we are making such a significant change in town.
Okay. And does anyone else have any other, anything that they think should be taken out? Or any other modifications at this point before we move forward?
No.
Not at this point.
Not at this point.
It's a long way on.
I'm playing a video game. Well, that's how you play video games.
Okay. All right, so the resolution would be as amended.
The resolution would be as amended and with the, with the adjustments as submitted. I'll give you a copy. All right. Dan Larson.
Sean Fitzgerald. Sean Fitzgerald, I.
Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal, I.
Claudia Riley.
Claudia Riley, I.
Keith Pettit, of course, I.
I would hope so. No, I'm all set. My suggestions are terrible.
Did you read that?
I did read that. And you made a friendly amendment.
I forgot.
Yeah.
No, sorry. I should have written it down when I have it. Okay. That can go to Donna?
I'm done.
Thank you very much. That was the tabled item. That brings us back to agenda item nine C, the draft agenda for the July twenty fourth regular meeting. Does anyone have any adjustments or recommendations to that at this time?
I just had one question, in and of all what the policy and procedure is for. I know we have a new state trooper, resident state trooper. Right? You started already?
Yep.
Is there any, I don't know. Is there any way you can come in and just say, and also introduce himself to us?
Yeah.
Sure.
I mean, that'd be great. So we put a face in the name.
Yep. And then there was an email from a constituent that had asked me about signage on a town road. And I forwarded that email. Thank you very much, Andy, for reaching back out to them and and moving items forward. But I had to admit to the resident that I was just as clueless as they were. Like, I had no clue how to get a sign put on your road. So I had made the suggestion that maybe it would be another good to know. I know you don't want to have all of our good to knows at the same time. But if we could possibly, if not on the agenda for July twenty fourth, make accommodations in a future one for Paul to maybe give a brief. You know.
Well, that, I mean, there's also, and I'm not sure who would be the best to do it. But I was approached by a resident who, down in below Stonecroft Mill Landing. And there was apparently some trees. It's like, if that's town property, who's responsible for what trees? Because apparently they're leaning towards your house. And that was just this afternoon. I just haven't had a chance, but yeah. Maybe just some of the procedures on, on who do you contact in the event of? And really, it all ends on Andy's lap, but.
Was it Mrs. Bromley?
No.
The reason I asked is she came in, Mrs. Bromley came into my office and brought that up and we were already addressing it.
So I want to say with Mrs. Bader. Yeah. Yeah, she just moved into town. About that long, her husband just died. So she lives, apparently her property backs up, it's Stonecroft. And I says, why don't you call the town manager? I says, he'll send out whoever.
Yeah, we've been doing a lot of tree work down there, but still, just.
Yeah, but people like, who do I call? Who do I call for? For a slew of things. And I don't know if there's anything on the website, you know, contact list, who to call in the event of, or you know, I never really looked at it. I just don't know.
Yeah, we have a very generic contact form on the website. I mean, I know if you, if you drill down to different departments, different departments have have sites that are helpful or focused in certain ways, but yeah. Kind of that, that generic web contact form of like, tell us your problem and we'll get it to someone nebulous. I mean, I could definitely, not that I'm saying that I'm the person to reach out to. Because I had no clue, I was not helpful. But, you know, a constituent reached out to me because they don't know who else to reach out to. And of course, I was able to forward it along appropriately, thankfully. But yeah, maybe, maybe some more information on contact. I agree.
And she lives in Stonecroft or a property of Butts?
Property of Butts. So I guess it's trees in her backyard, I'm assuming. You know, but.
One reason I asked, if she lived in Stonecroft, the avenue, would we, we have the housing authority and they have meetings and they have merit properties and that we have a protocol denied us.
I don't know if it backs up to the senior center property.
Gotcha.
Or Stonecroft.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I wouldn't know where that delineation was.
Well, it sounds like she's not living in there, so it's, that would work for her anyways, but we'll try to get her squared away.
Thank you.
Yeah, we put the phone list in, but we don't actually have a scenario that if you have this problem, isn't who you call, but when you do the view, do it, we put that list of everybody's phone number department. You know, I don't think we list tree ward. I think we list the board director. Along with everybody else, but.
Would that be the tree warden that would go out and do that?
Yeah.
So they will look at that?
Sure.
See, we learned something too. I learned something every means. The benefit of not knowing much. Okay, any other suggestions or anything for draft agenda?
I mean, I don't know if you want this here or if you want this under new business, but Sean and I are on the same wavelength that, you know, we.
We'll progress, we'll progress to ninety. Ninety, new business.
Yeah, I mean, I think I think we need a standardized process in place to look at job descriptions before they're posted, period, whether there are changes or not. I'm not personally comfortable with job descriptions that sit for ten, twelve years, whether they change or not. I think there's always an opportunity for a board to weigh in. And so I don't know the best way to go about that. But I also think we need to discuss that anytime we post a position, we need to see the job description, whether there are changes or not. So I don't know if that's a workshop, if that's an agenda item where we discuss it. And I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, Sean, because we're kind of.
Well, I think just, this will be with condolences to Andrew's workload. Just if, I believe we have a way to officially request an update for that going forward. Just like, let's, just, I don't know if it's. You have to, I don't even know how to word it, just officially worded the request to in X timeframe, and we get updated job descriptions. So it's in the records in the minutes, what have you. And then Andrew can say, yes, by X date, or I guess no, depending on how we request it. I don't know. But I, yeah, I mean, that's for a policy standpoint, even if even if it's, the notes are, the job description is the same, we have it updated every. I mean, I don't know if it would require a motion or anything to, I mean, that kind of sounds like a charter revision.
Well, I mean, I don't think it, I don't think it elevates itself to a charter revision at this point, but I do think Well, I, I, I mean, I don't think it, I don't think it elevates itself to a charter revision at this point, but I do think. There, there are provisions in section 11 for us to review the, the personnel policies. And I don't know if that's something that if it doesn't already exist in the personnel policies, maybe we just want to add a note that. You know, to your point that there's a standardized process for, for job description revision. But that, that would be a workshop to discuss.
Okay.
The personnel policies, if that's the appropriate place to put it. Below the chart.
Okay.
Uh. Because again, I, I don't want it to necessarily. You know, we have a lot of stuff in charter that only changes every five years. So this would be something that would be more flexible with Andy, depending on the makeup of future boards. Um, so, okay, so. So let's, let's put Sean down as a workshop for maybe personnel, personnel policy. I mean, we have to review them once every four years anyways, so this will count.
Okay, we should probably.
As our four-year review.
As, yeah, that's part of that. We can.
We can schedule something.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah. I, I like being contentious on personnel. I don't like being contentious on, contentious on policy. So we can nail down the policy, then we can. Get to the brass tacks rather than.
Correct.
Get lost in the weeds, if you'll forgive the metaphors.
Yep.
Yep.
And then I would say my, my addition to new business, and I don't know, I. Again, I don't want to have a ton of extra meetings. I think that my request could fall under either one of these. Upcoming workshops, but I am curious about the job description analysis and where. These things are going to fall. Cause to your point, if we have. Things that Donna has done that, that now as a town, we expect to get done on a routine basis. And they are being moved to other employees. Are those other employees' job descriptions being updated and their compensation being modified accordingly? Uh, so you know, that's something that, that we want to keep in mind. So.
And I just want to push a pin in an issue when we do this workshop or special meeting respective. Our job descriptions. We're, none of us here are human resources professionals, so how do we know if we're doing this right?
Well, anything we, well, a, anything we make any changes to, I think we'll definitely have to go through the town attorney, uh, you know, for review.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and.
Yeah.
You know, Howland and Sage has attorneys that are.
Employment.
More proficient in employment as opposed to other things.
Yeah, I would feel more humble than, we could say in lines of.
Well, we could say, well, yeah, and it would be completely wrong.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Any other? New business?
Yep.
Consent agenda. Item 10. Um. Consent agenda items are considered routine in nature, which a board may not need to discuss individually. Any board member wishes to discuss an item. Uh, there's only one item right now, so we will move right to approval of minutes. Uh, make a motion to approve the. Regular meeting minutes from the June 26, 2025, board of selection meeting. Uh, Dan Larson.
I.
Sean Fitzgerald.
I believe I was an official member for that meeting.
Yes, you were.
Oh, Fitzgerald, I.
Okay. Tiffany Teal.
Tiffany Teal.
Hey, Claudia.
Claudia Riley, I.
Keith. I was there for half of it. I will abstain. Um. I mean, I didn't look at it on the, on the video, but.
No, that's right. Yeah, that's.
Uh.
You have vacation now.
That was several days later. Okay, liaison reports, HMU services.
Um, I don't have anything for that, but I, just a quick update from the Hebron Board of Education. They have hired a new business manager. So they have filled that critically role. Um, I'm sure we'll be getting some face time with her once the budget season starts.
Okay. With her, do we have a name?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I was told that her name is. I'm sorry, I have it Cynthia Ghsam. Don't you mind that?
H U G H S A M.
The, uh, H U G.
H S A M.
Got it. Awesome. Uh, board of finance, they met the same night. Okay. Uh, land acquisition met. And unfortunately I had a conflict and I could not attend. And that one I have not reviewed the, uh, video on. But I did talk with one of the other members. Uh, there were a couple of parcels of land that were under discussion. Um. And I will get, they also went into executive session to discuss possible acquisition. Uh. I don't know if that was with one of the parcels that they discussed in open session. But I will review that and give that as part of my liaison report for next time. Rand Boe.
I do have a report tonight. Um. The, the replacement of the track is well underway and we expect that to be finished soon. Our problem is. Uh, the shed to store sand, et cetera, is complete and the piles. Yep. Were used to, that used to be behind the bleachers have been relocated. Thank you, Andy, for helping bring that to fruition. Uh, also, if y'all didn't know, uh, the athletic director, Dan Trudeau, uh, took a. New position with the town of Rocky Hill. Uh, now we have a new athletic director, Michelle Landry. She came from the East Hampton School System and she started on July 1st. So welcome, Michelle. Um, and then just lastly, uh, Rand Boe does not meet in July. And it will resume meeting in August in time of school year. Okay.
Okay. And that brings us to item 12, public comments. Please, Holly.
Well, we have it, 98 East Street. First, thank you very much for your appointment of Dory Wolf. Sorry, I apologize for consistently having come back to this. Dory's dedicated a number of years to the town of Hebron, and I think it's important for you guys just to take a pause. And think about what your lives would be like if Donna left on the 15th and Dory wasn't doing her job. Thank you, Dory. Thank you, Board of Selection, for appointing her and thank you, Donna, for your service.
Any other further comment?
I have one.
Dan.
Uh, I have a public comment. Uh. Happened to drive by, uh, going down 85 South. And there was a throng of people doing whatever they do on the courts. Which I have no idea what pick-a-ball is, but they're there. They're using it. Little, little things going back and forth.
So I'm very happy the courts are there.
Yeah. And the sorority showed up today, so.
Excellent.
That makes them even happier.
That is wonderful.
Okay.
A lot of little things going to.
Okay. Any other further comment?
Nothing on mine.
Alright, then we finally progress to item 13.
Making moves with the gerbit.
Oh. Yes. Eight, oh no, nine thirty, nine thirty-nine.
Eight something.
Sorry. Sorry.
Goodnight at the one, thank you.